Thank you.
He couldn't anyway, he was already out.
Oh, was he?
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
That was Brad. Okay, welcome. Towne Groveland is the planning board meeting Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, 7:00 PM, Town Hall. The, we could do, we don't really do roll call, but can do attendance.
I think you have to.
Is Wally on?
No, he's not on. Wally is.
Yeah, we have to do roll call, he's not on.
Okay.
I'll make a motion open.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor to open.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Okay, we'll go to the agenda. First up, public hearing, continued, 181R School Street. A hearing in accordance with Master of General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81T, the Towne Groveland Subdivision Rules and Regulations and Article 14 of the Groveland General Bylaws, to hear the application of Groveland Redevelopment LLC care of Louis Minucci Jr., 231 Sutton Street, Suite 1B, North Andover, Massachusetts, 01845, requesting approval of a six lots definitive subdivision plan labeled 181R School Street, Groveland Massachusetts and Associated Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance Permit. The site is located in the residential zoning district, residential two zoning district. The proposed subdivision is located at 181R School Street, Groveland, Mass., 01834. Assesses map 34, parcel 13, what is the wish of the board?
Well said.
Open? Open, uh, public hearing?
Uh, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for 181R School Street.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Okay. Update on 181 School Street, uh, 181R School Street. There has been a revised version of the plans, and they are still, they were sent in last week. They are still currently under review by TEC for their responses. So engineer is still looking through our, our engineer is still looking through the plans. We still have a public hearing that is open, so I wanted, we're starting to wind down the public hearing aspect of it. After the public hearing, we will, excuse me, um, we will be able to hear from the TEC, and then we will be able to have our discussions here amongst the board and go over a special permit that's required and the, those aspects of the, the plan and the stormwater management, things like that. So, um, the applicant has asked to extend or, is that the right word? Continue to, uh, the next meeting. And I am okay with that as long as the rest of the board is, but as far as the public hearing, I, it's a little bit lighter crowd. I know that we've heard from you and, um, but if there was any more, uh, questions, I know we have some people online as well, maybe some new people I haven't seen before or heard from. The plan for myself is to gather all the questions that I do have that I've received via email, and through here, we have a list of them. I'm going to have them, um, I'm going to answer them to the best of my ability, and then the remainder, I'm still going to have my answers as well as the remainder that are unanswered vetted by TEC, and I will read those out, follow up to make sure that all of the public questions are answered. But there won't, there won't be a back and forth on the answering, on the answers, but those questions that will be submitted will at least have some type of answer to if they haven't already been answered. So that's my plan there, um, for the feedback. And then once we, once we do that, um, we can deliberate amongst ourselves, and then we have to come to some type of conclusion, decision, and move, go forward eventually. But that's weeks down the line because we, meetings down the line because we still have to hear back from TEC, and then we would have to review and then answer any questions. So, um, I'll, I'll go to in person first, is, did you have any additional questions? And again, same, if you had a question, you'd have to stand, go back up to the podium, state your name, address, and, um...
Different way, Alyssa Drive. I'm just, uh, so the public hearing, we'll have another chance next meeting, I guess. We don't, I want to hear what TEC has to say. You know what I mean, so I don't want to waste your time.
Yep, absolutely. So, yeah, yeah.
Can you unmute the mic, please?
Public hearing will be continued.
Yeah, the public comment period will continue.
Nope, because once we close public hearing, we really, we can't even listen, hear back from TEC or, um, or the applicant as well, right? That, that part of it's closed, then it becomes a deliberation part of it. So it's, it's still going to remain, it's just going to be continued onto the next meeting until we have all parties here and hear the finals. And if you, but if you do have additional, you're waiting for responses back from what TEC has to say, absolutely. Appreciate it, thank you. Anyone that is on WebEx or, I don't know what we're using for, um, had a question Zoom? Apologize. A question out there that hasn't been asked yet, or, uh, that's what we use, I use WebEx at work, I apologize. Did anyone in the public online have a question they wanted to shout out or just kind of waiting to hear what everyone else has to, uh, what we have back from TEC? Okay, silence is golden, understood, thank you. So with that, um, entertain the motion from the board to, we don't have any parties here, so there's nothing else to say. Oh, you, a question? There's his mic right there, if you don't have to look up to the, just, uh, make sure it says it's gone green, please. There you go.
There you go.
Kathy Chadwick, 1303 Alyssa Drive in Groveland. When's the next board meeting for, that will address this? Do we have that?
We're about to tell you in two seconds.
That was my question.
All right.
Thank you.
That's an, that's an excellent segue, thank you. All right, so I think we have a conflict for the next meeting with, with a quorum problem on the 21st.
We do.
We do.
I won't be there.
Okay.
So I think it's prudent to continue to the first Tuesday in February, which would be the meeting after that, which is February 4th?
That, the first, okay, so we do the first.
That's the first Tuesday, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Rebecca, your thoughts on the 4th is, or do we have to go to the 28th, is that leave?
So does the board technically still want to meet on the 21st to discuss other items? Or does the board want to skip their next meeting on the 21st entirely and just continue their meeting to the 4th?
Okay. Are you, are you here the 21st as well?
I'm, I'm here the 21st, yeah. Brad's traveling, so.
I'm here on the 21st.
Okay. And you have the 21st. So...
Then it would be recommended that you would continue this particular public hearing to the February 4th meeting.
Gotcha.
But with the understanding that you'll probably still meet for the record on the 21st concerning other matters.
Works for me, works for the rest. All right, so we will, we still need to continue.
I, I will make a motion to continue the public hearing on 181R School Street to Tuesday, February 4th at 7:00 PM.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded to move the, continue the public hearing to February 4th, 7:00 PM, uh, here in this building. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Thank you.
That means there'll be no on the 21st, you mean the 4th? No, 181.
Correct.
Nothing.
It will not be on, will not be on the agenda. You're welcome, and thank you. To those of you online that are, were interested in the 181R, that's, it's now closed and we're moving on to the next agenda item, so just to let you know.
Well, continued.
Continued, sorry, continued. Apologizing a little bit.
No, no, no.
The verbage, absolutely. All right. Next up, public hearing for new 441 Main Street, SD Park. A public hearing in accordance with General Law, Chapter 48, as amended for the application made by SD Park Trust for the premises located at 441 Main Street, map 24 lot 9, located in the residential two zoning district for site plan review, section 50-13.2A1, and a special permit under the Aquaphor Protection Bylaw, section 50-6.2H of the Groveland zoning bylaw. What is the wish of the board? Stand a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
One second.
Second.
Aye. I'll give a aye. Thank you, all right. Excuse me. What we got here? Play the ketchup, yeah. Ah, here it is. I'll open it, we can share.
So they have a...
We do have a couple of, uh, copies of an updated plan. Uh, the plan you two gentlemen are unfolding are, it's kind of the next item on the agenda. Oh, okay. Oh, that's the 102?
Yep.
You have, you're giving us plans now, or?
Okay.
Okay.
We have new plans coming.
Okay. Um, if you have, yes, I like the big, the big ones are a lot easier than, and we can, we can share. Awesome, thank you.
You can share.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I mean, I assume...
Rebecca, you have the copy?
Uh, I have the...
All right, and as you review, just make sure you state your name, where you're from, and go from there, and...
Sure. My name is James Ogden, I'm here representing SD Park Trust. Mr. Harper's unable to attend tonight, he wasn't really feeling that well. With me here tonight is Adam Machonda from Machonda and Associates. I think I'm going to let Adam maybe take a little bit of this and run with it.
Sure. Uh, hang on one second, we just got a text from Wally, he's looking for the link, I think.
Oh, Wally, so he's on?
I just got a text.
He's asking for the link, but I, I don't have the, the actual link, it's on...
It is.
It's on, it's on the website.
Do you want me to forward it to you, or does he have access to his email? How would you like?
Can you?
I don't know, you opened up a can of web, so you can take this.
Oh, sorry.
Rick, if you want to send it to me, I can cut your case.
Do you have access to your email?
Yes.
We have a board, I'll give one minute, one of the board members is going to join online.
I'd get you the link too.
I wouldn't ask for it.
If it was you, I would have said forget it.
I would have said, thank you. No, I wouldn't have asked for it.
Uh, no, I was, I was speeding on the mail, so.
Sorry, guys, thanks for being patient.
Appreciate your patience.
Did I send it to you? Did you get it?
Want to reiterate?
Maybe send it to someone else, I'm not having confidence in my update here. Is he on? No, yeah, I...
Negative.
It is a bit of a challenge though, like posting that Zoom link to a public calendar.
Yeah.
You guys want, you want to post the...
That's right, it's on the town website. Oh, it's on the, it's not a high...
Not like...
Seems like our townsfolk did a good job finding it. At least, these guys relate to the last project. It's all like 809 folks.
Send it to both Chris and Patrick.
Oh.
In case it's not going through for one, I thought maybe it would go through for another.
You emailed me?
Oh dear. I don't get anything.
Yeah, I didn't. Brad, so you confirmed with those travel plans?
Huh?
I didn't get anything, Rebecca.
Yep, that'd be good, done.
Did you short me an L?
What's that? I did. I mean, you're out here, these parts, yeah. Yeah. On the national...
I won't forget you.
All us little people.
Yeah, yeah. Some of us little people are getting bigger and bigger and better.
Do you say us little people, or do you say?
He knows what I'm saying. No, some are slowing down too.
I'm getting a bigger piece of people.
I wonder if we'll see when he pops in, because his chick will be on the show, Miss Carol.
Could he fly through the town road?
I don't see it, Rebecca.
I don't see it either.
Oh, you can see people? You can see the list?
Did you email or did you text? Yeah, I'm not, I'm not my email.
Oh, Rebecca, you can see the list of participants?
You can see the list of participants on those? The link hasn't come through to either of us yet, so.
Okay.
Out of the interest of the applicant's time?
Yeah.
How much do we want to wait?
I think we're just out of...
Or just continue?
I think that's fine too, I, I think it's okay to get started.
Yeah.
You guys are ready, then we can go. He'll join when you go.
We tried.
No, for sure.
You might not even be able to join.
Right.
Right.
So as I said earlier, my name is James Ogden, I live at Two Woodland Road in Georgetown. I'm here for the SD Park Trust. The trust received a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, um, earlier this year to approve, uh, construction of a 3,200 square foot site, uh, building on a 15.5 acre site located at 441 Main Street. You guys have the proposed site plan in front of you. The proposed site plan you're actually looking at is actually the approved site plan from 2015 with the new additional building overlaid on it. There aren't too many changes to the, to the site as far as, um, access or egress or, or lighting or, um, utilities or anything. We're just looking to add the 3,200 square foot building primarily to be used for onsite storage of equipment used on the property. So there shouldn't be, it should be minimal additional, um, vehicle trips. One of the, I guess, things we're primarily here to discuss is the Aquaphor Protection Permit, the Aquaphor Protection Zone Permit, um, and Adam Machonda has some information regarding the, um, changes to the impervious area that result on the site from the building. So I'm going to let him talk about that for a bit.
Adam Machonda from Machonda and Associates, and Jay asked me, um, to be here tonight to kind of speak on, um, the proposal of this 3,200 square foot, uh, building on site. And, um, we're overlaying the, so I'll start with, at the top left of the plan, as you guys look at it, you'll see I kind of broke down a little table of impervious areas. So when I break it all down and do the math and crunch the numbers, it ends up being 1,782 square feet, uh, increase in impervious, uh, in impervious area. So right now, the existing conditions, 55% of the site is impervious, and with the 1,700 square feet, 1,800 square feet, it's becoming 55.2 is what it becomes. But something I want to, it's a minimal increase in impervious area, but something I do want to bring your attention to is I am proposing underground infiltration systems for the building. So the building, it's obviously impervious area, but it's, almost doesn't have the same, um, impacts as if it was like a 3,200 square foot paved area, um, because it's direct flow, you know, into the groundwater. You know, you'll have, you know, the gutters, and then you'll have, you know, a roof leader with an overflow, and it'll go into the cul-de-sac chambers, um, you could see behind the building. So what I'm kind of getting at is, it, it's also overlaying an existing patio, which is just a straight up impervious area, and obviously no water is, you know, infiltrating, you know, into the ground there. So when that's removed and you have the building over that area, all of that area, the 3,200 square feet is almost, I'm not saying it's not impervious, like on paper, adds impervious area, but it doesn't have the same properties. It's, you know, direct flow right into the groundwater. So it's actually, in terms of the groundwater on site, it's actually improving from the existing conditions is what I'm getting at. When you actually, what's that?
Do you have a plan for the cul-de-sac and?
I, I, I have a, yeah, actually I do. Is that it right there? Yeah. I, I also, so when I, when I calc these chambers out, um, I obviously didn't just make them up, what I did was I pulled a USDA soil map and I, you know, I could provide the paperwork, I have it all done, but I also calc'd out the 72-hour drawdown based on the soils according to the soil maps on site. And I did one inch of rain over the, um, the roof to calc it down, so that's basically how I came up with the sizing of the cul-de-sac chambers here.
Did you do that on HydroCAD?
Uh, yeah, I did do it in HydroCAD. Well, actually, I kind of just did it by hand, I didn't even have to do HydroCAD really, because I just did, I, I have, like, at the office in the folder, I actually have the paperwork crunching the numbers, so I can obviously provide that, no problem, if you, if you want to see that, it's not a problem.
I just wanted to point out that Adam's the engineer here. I'm just the layman that, that looks at this from the perspective of, there's impervious area on the site now. It's causing some runoff that will eventually get infiltrated into the ground in the surrounding grass areas. By putting a building over it, we're capturing the roof water that falls on that footprint, essentially clean roof water off a steel roof, getting recharged directly into the groundwater. So we are actually improving, as he said, the groundwater infiltration on the site, although we're covering more of the site. So we're improving the groundwater situation by putting more, capturing more of the water on the roof and putting it directly into the ground.
So just one, one more, not to get too crazy with my numbers, but, um, because I, I kind of thought about it a little bit. Actually, when you think about it, like I said, with the building, it, it's not really your typical, um, properties of an impervious area, like just a pavement or whatever, a patio or whatever. So if you basically just say got rid of the building in terms of the impervious calc's and stuff like that, you're actually decreasing the impervious kind of, like the impact of impervious on site, do you follow me? You know, because if you, um, because you're eliminating this patio space, like the seven, whatever the patio is, it's, uh, what's the patio area there? I said it was, uh, 1,037, so 1,000 square feet, the patio is, that area is basically, it's actually like 1,400 when you do the numbers of more impervious area that's not treated, you know what I mean? That's what I'm getting at.
Can I ask a more overarching question? Because I think you guys came in like several meetings ago, and we had some talks about, okay, this is a 2015 plan, we think things expired. Can somebody clue me in on what happened between then and now? You know, I, so you, you got some relief from the zoning board?
Yeah, I mean, this, this permitting process was, was multiple steps. It was, it's a residential zoned area, so we needed relief from zoning board to allow an increase in the commercial use on the site. And then I was optimistic that you guys might waive site plan review based on the prior site plan and the prior modification to the site plan, um, and the, the fact that we're not really, we're not altering any of the existing conditions on the property that are traditionally governed under, or not governed, but reviewed under site plan review.
Did we, um, not to jump in, but didn't we like ask for a full site plan? Well, one of the last meetings?
Um, I believe there was a member who was a little bit vocal about asking for full site plan, um, but as I said, we're, we're not changing any traffic flows, we're not changing any lighting schedules, we're not changing anything that's traditionally covered under site plan review.
But from then to now, some other things have happened. You got some relief under the, from the zoning board?
Well, the zoning board granted the permit to allow the building to be constructed.
Okay.
Pending site plan review.
Okay.
So if you guys, we're here tonight to ask you guys if you have any reasonable conditions that you want to put on this proposed construction.
So the runoff from the parking lot above was, where's that going? Does that improve the, is that improve?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
So it's hard to tell like where the runoffs from the other, from the parking lot above it is going, so that's why we probably asked for a better plan. So what do we do, you know, so what happens to the runoff above that building? Are you capturing any of that?
So the existing, as it is now, I mean, there's, you could see there's catch basins on site, so ultimately, when I look at it here, it's, it seems like it goes a couple different places, you know, there's a couple different catch basins, but like, if you go halfway through the site, it looks like it's basically making, making its way to Mermack River, is, uh, to some degree, if you look at it this way, I mean, you know, these are one-foot contours on here, but as you can see, there are catch basins throughout the site that end up, you know, going out. There's a 15-inch RCP heading out towards Mermack River there. There is, but there is, I will say this though, by, you know, you see Unit C or whatever, the building, 4950, towards the, uh, the building cluster towards the Mermack River there, the pavement ends, this is all grass area going down, um, to Mermack River, so it does have a slope downwards, but, um, that's what I was kind of getting at with this building here. Kind of what's existing is existing, but what we're actually proposing now isn't going to have any further negative impact, it's, it's actually going to have a positive impact because we're controlling the roof runoff, like, we're not adding any new impervious area that would add to that flow, you know what I mean?
Well, you're capturing runoff from that building, I think, I'd like, I almost want to see a better plan of what's going on with the existing parking lot. Where the waters, you know, the flow of the water. I don't see, I don't, I don't actually see the catch basins on here. Unit A, I don't know what Unit A 300 square feet is, and that's why I think we asked for a better plan.
These are all catch basins here, catch basin, catch basin, catch basin, catch basin. And then there's a catch basin over here, a catch basin over here, and you could see it flare, you know, has a flare in here, and then you have a RCP invert 713 here. I mean, I, realistically, I probably should have called them out as catch basins and provided rim inverts, which I have all that information, because we did an existing conditions, um, but basically it happens as it captures, you could even put slopes of pipes on the plan, I don't care, but it all comes.
Okay, but the slopes of pipes, I like to see the catch basin where the runoff is coming from here.
Yes.
And if we can approve that when it comes into that building.
Yeah.
If everything slopes to the back.
Yeah, so like this parking area captures in this catch basin, and then it kind of goes 21 to 20, kind of slopes down to here, and then there's a lower spot, 18, into this catch basin, this one here.
And I, I'd also like to probably see what the building looks like, maybe where the garage doors are, lockout doors and...
It's coming, yeah, the garage doors coming in.
Just one on one end, one on the other end, is that what you're saying?
Um, I'm looking for a North Arrow on here, there's two garage doors on the... There's two garage doors on the, the northwesterly side, not the narrow end, and there'll be two garage doors on the southerly side facing Unit B, which is along the mass electric property.
So, yeah, I've just, I'd like to see it blown up, I'd like to see a better plan, and maybe if there's a way, if there's only one catch basin here, if there's a way of making a swell in front of there, I mean, I'm not an engineer, you are.
So, the, the plan that you're looking at, the catch basins that Adam pointed out, those in two thousand fifteen were deemed to be adequate, like, that was state-of-the-art in two thousand fifteen to capture the runoff from the existing pavement.
Well, we're a decade hence, so...
We're ten years later, yeah.
They are, but...
It's going to be different, and I mean, again, you know, what was, what was state-of-the-art then, may not be state-of-the-art now.
Sure.
And the person on the screen, please mute.
Can we hold on a second? Rebecca, can you mute everyone on?
I've asked the moderator, Jason, to use this online to mute that individual. I'm not sure if he's unable to, but I have asked. I do have the capabilities as a participant.
Okay, thank you. Those online, if you could please keep your mics muted until it's public comment time, we would very much appreciate it.
The magazine never pays for guests, and lately, I've...
Whoever that is speaking right now? Is that Mr. Gavin?
It's been fun after class.
It looks like, it's Gavin. It looks like Mr. Gavin. Mr. Gavin, could you mute, mute your mic, please?
You're amazing. I mean, what, what else is there? You come on this room, and you reach out, and say, you know...
Excuse me, Mr. Gavin. Mr. Gavin. Could you mute, mute your mic, please? Or Miss Gavin? Might work. Quiet now. All right.
So, I just was asking for clarification, because I thought the application under the special permit aquifer was to relocate the impervious surface to another area on the site, but it sounds like the argument is now that with proper drainage, there's no need to do so, is that what we're getting at?
Seems like they're adding a building.
No, no, I, I understand that they're adding a building, but if you look at the application, the reason that they need to go before the aquifer's special permit is because of the level of impervious surface that they're creating.
Correct.
And so, originally, the plan was that they were going to add pervious surface in another location to make up for the impervious surface that they were capitalizing on with the new building, but it sounds like now we're talking about the drainage, the new building.
Well, I wanted to come here and basically discuss the math that says we're at fifty-five percent. Obviously, the difference between fifty-five percent and fifty-five-point-two is an increase, but as I said, I was hoping that you guys could make the decision whether or not you wanted to put a restriction on this site plan, that we remove seventeen-hundred square feet of impervious area somewhere on the site to balance it. Or if, per Adam's explanation, that's deemed not necessary.
So, this is like, an either-or application?
No, this is, this is, our position is that what we're proposing is adequate. But if, if you deem that it's not, ask us to remove seventeen-hundred square feet of provided, then that is deemed adequate.
Can't guess. Are you also, the, I see on the outside of the building, you have an additional expanded pavement area on the outside. Like, forty feet of section of...
Yeah, so, so that's the impervious, um, the bottom line, the impervious area for driving to building.
Thank you.
So, just to get back to your point about the entryway, we're, we're like...
I'm trying to mute them, but the act, since it's in the room, in the small room.
I was going to say, can you boot them?
Here, allow me, allow me one second.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to, please don't speak, I'm going to, I have to close, I have to close, I have to close the program here, okay?
We're here, not withstanding the substantive ones.
Apologies, give me one second.
But, Mrs. Gavin, please mute your microphone. I don't know if it's her. I mean, she can't hear us, because she's talking to her.
On the building, that's going to remain, like, impervious up to the building, we're just taking the roof runoff. So, you know, when, you know, it's storming out or whatever, and it's hitting, like, raining on the roof or whatever, that, we don't have to worry about that just flowing off randomly into a gutter and just going into the parking lot.
Right, it goes into like an underground pond.
Yeah, so, around the building itself, in terms of the garage, I mean, there might be like, you know, a little apron or something like that, but it's, we're pretty much matching the grade. I mean, we're not significantly changing any flow patterns, or, you know, to add catch basins or anything like that.
Is that something that, like, you want a little bit more of a detailed site plan, and maybe TEC to take a look at that?
I think, and apologize, I think I just want to reset for a second, because I might, maybe I'm just a little scattered because of all the Zoom chaos. So, looking for, what exactly are you seeking, this, the special permit and the site plan review? What exactly is the request?
The request is basically for you guys to review the site plan, propose any reasonable conditions on it, but also issue an aquifer protection permit stating that we're complying with the best practices of the aquifer protection district requirements. I would like to point out that, as Adam said, the grading contours on this plan are at one-foot intervals. A traditional site plan you guys might be used to seeing per your bylaw requires two-foot intervals, so this is twice as much detail. This is a very flat site.
And to the point that I was trying to make before, the issue is that I, I do want to be very clear, I think it's getting very confusing right now, because we're talking about a bunch of different things, but there is a trigger for why they're here before you. The trigger is, one, there's the zoning bylaw requires a certain level of impervious surface, uh, of pervious surface on the site, impervious area on the site. They are exceeding that with what they're proposing. They're here before you arguing that they don't need to meet that threshold, because they do with the drainage infrastructure that they're looking to put into place. So, there's that one issue, and then the second issue being the aquifer protection zoning bylaw requires a different threshold that they are meeting with their design, and now they're arguing that, again, the drainage allows them the impervious area that they should have, and therefore, they don't need to apply for said permit.
So, so, so essentially, everything you're doing exceeds what's required, but you don't want to apply anyways? Is that what I'm getting?
Do you have the seventeen-hundred square feet to, to change over?
We have, like...
More than enough, right?
Seven and a half acres.
Yeah.
So...
Does this have to go to TEC for a review?
That's up to the board. Again, the, those, those thresholds are triggered. Originally, the conversation was that they were going to reallocate another area on site that would take up the square footage, that would make it so that this development did not add to the overall area of the, of the site. Tonight, they've come in with a completely different plan, to say that they want to add drainage infrastructure, to do just what they would do with the additional land, but in a different way. So, that, I'm not sure, and that is up to the board, is whether or not, because their drainage infrastructure is being enhanced in order to accommodate the runoff, does that need additional engineering review, or does it not?
Well, and, and we're, we're laypeople up here, you know?
I'm not an engineer, all right.
Looking at these structures, which, I mean, may or may not be, I mean, I, I take you at your word.
Can I just address something that Rebecca had said?
Yeah, sure, please.
So, the, the plan set that was submitted, I don't know, a week ago, did show this infiltration area. We didn't have an infiltration detail, but the intent of the roof drain and the conversations that we had preparing this plan, and submitting the application, was that we were going to infiltrate roof area. Then it was very astutely brought to my attention that we are over the fifty percent threshold allowable in the zoning district, so as long as we maintained that fifty-five percent, we wouldn't necessarily need to seek a variance. So, we could seek a variance, going back to the zoning board of appeals, seek a variance, and Adam can explain how we're actually improving the site conditions, and I'm not a betting person, but I think they would probably agree with Adam that they're improving the situation, and grant us the variance to go from fifty-five to fifty-five-point-two. We're here to provide more details on the roof drain, just from an engineering perspective, illustrate the significance of fifty-five to fifty-five-point-two, based on the, the conditions of the footprint of the building, and simultaneously saying, if you guys want to go with the pull-up fifteen, seventeen-hundred square feet of pavement somewhere on the site, then we'll do that.
I, I mean, I would, I think, my personal opinion is, it, it sounds logical, but I would definitely want TEC to confirm that for the, for the town.
It's not actually what the application stated.
Well, I mean, do we want to go through a public hearing and then have discussion amongst the board?
Is there any debate?
Well, I, I mean, yeah.
I mean, we, if we went through public hearing, we would still continue it, and then we would...
Right, right, right.
We could still discuss among ourselves during that.
Sure.
Yeah, we can have a con, we can have, okay.
But we, we'd like to, I mean, I think, I'm leaning exactly where you are, I think, you know, this is a plan that's ten years old, this is, you know, things are probably significantly different engineering-wise all over, you know, all over, to get some set of eyes, you're sending us engineering information and saying, you know, bless this, and I'm saying, I'm a layperson, I can't possibly do that, and with any veracity, so I would at minimum, if, if that's the Plan A, right, I would at minimum want to see engineers respond to engineers. So, and then say, yeah, board, it made, this makes sense, and this is better, and, you know, you guys should, you guys should move forward.
Yeah.
So, like, like, from a logistics sense, I don't see any way we could do, we could agree to your engineering plan without having some engineering review.
I, I totally understand that, and just, because I do this...
And you might be right, you know, like, it's...
I'm just going to point out, Brad mentioned, did you do this in, oh, I lost the, did you do this in HydroCAD? And Adam's response was, no, I did it on paper.
Yeah.
It's that simple. Like, the calculations for this area is...
Well, I think...
Well, then, the review will be simple as well.
Exactly.
Which is okay, too.
Recording in progress.
Doesn't have to be complicated, that's okay. It doesn't have to take a long time and be lengthy, but we want to vet.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Engineering matches with engineering.
I think, to Patrick's point, it's, it's simple for him, because he's an engineer.
Absolutely, yep.
I'm not.
I'm going to give this up again.
I mean, I mean, for, for me, I, I agree, I don't know why we wouldn't want TEC review, and I also don't know why we wouldn't want a full site plan review. I think the plans historically for this site are extremely messy, and I think the more we can level set, whenever a new plan goes into place, can only benefit down the road boards where something else changes, and we want to make sure, see what was done, exactly what was done, and what plans were approved, and what was done, and what was, you know? Because I think that was one of the prob, that's been one of the problems historically with the site, is that there's been plan over plan over plan over plan over plan over plan, and now, what happened to one, what happened to the other, and which one supersedes what, and I think we need, you know, in the interest of future discussions...
In present clarity.
Right. I think we need to be very clear about what it is, have a very clear, concise application in plan in front of us to action, and then have engineer, engineer review, like, you know, to make sure our due diligence is done. That's just my purview.
If it's, if it's as simple as he says, it's going to be quick with TEC.
So, TJ, could, do you then, do we make a vote to have TEC review the plans, the plans submitted by the applicant?
Yeah, because we have to, we could, we could request that.
Because that, that seems like...
It's up to us to request that.
No matter what happens, you know, in the sort of blimp view, like, that seems like something that needs to happen.
And it, remind you, it's, it's not like Rebecca said, it's not just the site plan that needs to be reviewed, it's also that special permit under the aquifer protection bylaw that needs to be reviewed, because they're saying that with the new infiltration system, that, that would, they would need the, the special permit to not have, to not meet those requirements. We need to make sure that that does meet the requirements, because it's, the aquifer is one of the most high-priority things that we have, so, taking it, and I'm sure you know exactly everything that you need to know, so it should be an easy review, but we still, for the people, we need to make sure that it's, it's covered.
Yeah.
As far as a site plan, though, I mean, do we need an updated, do we not just use the, the current site plan that's already there, or do you have them create and see what, and have that to compare against, to look at for details, or create a whole new site plan? I mean...
Do you want a better site plan?
I, I mean, I, I would...
And obviously, it's up to the board.
I, I would like to make sure that whatever the application should have, a very up-to-date current site plan detailing exactly what is going to be done and/or not done to the site.
And that would be another thing, that if you use your current site plan and submit it back to TEC, and TEC says, yes, that is, this is a true site plan, what act, uh, the current, or, um...
Or they, they may say that things have changed in ten years, and certain things need to, need to be updated, or changed, or amended, or whatever.
Right.
But they might also say everything's fine.
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, thinking down the road, for whatever reason, you know, the board or someone needs to go back and review this, you know, three, four, five years, you know, here's exactly what we looked at, here's exactly what happened, here's exactly what was proposed, and here's what was approved or not approved.
So, again, regardless of whether, whatever the ultimate sort of back to you guys is, it sounds like TEC needs to get involved to see what's, you know, what's the, what's the status of things as they are.
So, are we looking for a site plan?
Maybe the TEC information, like, mitigates what we're...
That's not going to be up to TEC, that's going to be up to us.
No, I know, but based on what they see in the current site plan, if it's, you know, like, this is hopelessly outdated because of these engineering problems, you know, that were ten years ago, into the map.
Yeah.
I would say, Mr. Chair, the, the biggest thing that I'm trying to get across is that they're applying for a site plan review, and they're applying for a special permit under the aquifer protection district. The applicant has submitted an application, but they have submitted no narrative to explain what they're explaining this evening. I think it's in the best interest of the board to have the applicant put together an argument as to what they are arguing, to then be reviewed by TEC, proving why they're making that argument, so that TEC can verify that the argument is in fact sound, so that the board can then feel comfortable making a determination.
So, instead of making an oral presentation, probably a written presentation supporting the contentions that, okay, this is Plan A, this is what we would like to do, and this is why, this is why it's okay, this is Plan B, i- in the alternative, if, you know, that would be, I think that would be helpful to everybody.
Because, because the application you filled out wasn't what we're looking at, am I right?
Well, it's what's there, but it's not clear what arguments being made based upon what they're applying.
And what's been already submitted.
Yeah, I think the, the part here that's clear is that the goal is to build a thirty-two-hundred-square-foot building with an extremely minimum amount of alteration to the existing site. You wouldn't typically, you wouldn't typically try to review everything outside of the scope of the proposed addition. Like, if I could...
You've altered the site?
Right.
... beyond the scope of the single project. Now, the entire project has to go under review, and I think that's one of the biggest reasons why we originally have requested an entire site review. I think it's important to get all the information, so we can present it to TEC, not only to collaborate and protect the town, but that's, uh, so's my job.
Yeah. No, and I, and I would argue that, you know, just that putting a thirty-two-hundred-square-foot building does alter the site enough just in and of itself to warrant, warrant a, a full review, because that's a substantial transformation to any property, and others to the size.
Remembering that in two thousand fifteen, when you submitted the initial site plan, this building had nothing to do with anything, there was no concept of this building with, regarding that site plan. That was why we had misgivings the last time we talked about it.
Correct. So, just...
So, roadmap, so roadmap sounds like, to me, prepare, prepare, you know, prepare like a brief that says, okay, this is what we want to do, and this is why it's okay, and then, we would then review it ourselves and also submit it to TEC for review with the other materials, and then, I, I think it might be an open question as to whether we will ultimately require another site plan based on what comes back from TEC, right?
Well, it would be, it would, it builds on the board, the board...
It would be, it would be up to the board, I don't think TEC...
But we could take that information about, like, how... But we could take that information about, like, how, like, if, how wanting the plan is, or not, depending on their view, could inform what we would ultimately decide.
I, I mean, in, in, I mean, in my opinion, the application should include a full site plan.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I, I agree, I agree conceptually.
So an updated, an updated full site plan.
You want to take a vote on it?
Yeah, and then, and then with that, I mean, that's...
Is there anything, is there anything that's, is there any reason that we wouldn't have the power to request, to, to expect that?
No.
A, a fully revised site plan?
Um, I'd have to take a closer look. I, I think that it would be within your jurisdiction, but again, once they make the argument, TEC could very well say that the argument that they're making is valid, and therefore they would agree that the proposed plan would not have any impact to the rest of the site, and in fact, could potentially provide a better situation that is currently exist than what good would an entire site plan really do for the board, because at that point, it, it might, but the board might at their discretion want to take a closer look at the site in a whole, as a whole, and figure out whether or not this building would have additional impact under their purview, under the site plan review by law. So I, I do think it is, but I would need to further check that there would be any limitations.
So certainly, getting the, this is what we want to do, and this is why it's okay, in writing, so that we can have it vetted by the, by our engineers, seems like under any of the solution, any of the situations of how this moves forward, that's an appropriate next step. And then, to me, have the, have the TEC vetting, and then maybe it is, or maybe it isn't appropriate based on what they say, like, to, to have a full site plan.
So, right.
So like, I, I see the flow chart as...
Correct.
Make your, make your pitch, and why we're good, and, and why we're good in the alternative, if, you know, like, okay, we've got all, we've got acres of land, too, we could do it this way also, like, and then we vet it through TEC, they give us feedback, and then we can decide whether we need a full site plan, or maybe that's not even necessary, depending on...
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna say, so based on the current, use the current site plan, the most updated, based on the current site plan, explain those, those impacts, changes, and the reasons for that, the justification for that, and then that can be submitted over to TEC for a review, and then we can get the feedback, and then go from there. Does that sound right? Am I missing anything?
That seems, that seems reasonable.
I'd like to see the specs of the building as well.
The what?
Specs of the building.
Specs of the building.
So, so basically, saying, what I could do is put together like a nice narrative, explaining pretty much what I'll do as a narrative, and put it in writing of what's going on, what we're proposing, the benefits, all that stuff.
Yep. And, and quantifying that with the, you know, I mean, you already have your...
Why you, why it qualifies under the current rules.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, those, those pieces are important, too.
And then see what's up, you know, basically submit that, break it down, this is what's going on, and then come back and we'll see if we really need to...
And then we have review from our engineers, who, like, then can talk to these engineers.
This is, this is the reason why we feel as though this infiltration system replaces having to create 1,700 additional square feet of, of space that...
And they have already provided information in your packet that includes the provisions within the site plan approval by law, that states where they're putting the building, whether or not they'll result in any change in parking, whether or not there's additional enclosed units, so they do make a narrative and an argument as to why they believe that they comply with the site plan approval. So again, that might not require additional site plan altogether after that review. It's the, the drainage that's not really discussed that gives us...
Correct.
...of an understanding as to how to move forward.
That's a little bit why I'm sitting here a little bit dumbstruck, because there was some conversation about a narrative. Had you guys seen the narrative that's in your packet?
Yeah.
I believe so.
And it talked through the building location, its existence outside the floodplain, its distance from the residential budding properties, locating it within the, the fenced portion of the site, utilizing the existing entries and exit gates, you know, being consistent with the objectives of the Phase 2 part of the permit from 2015. You guys read through all that? And Brad had raised the question that he wanted to see specs on the building. Have you guys seen the building plans that I submitted?
If we did, I don't remember. That was how many months ago?
It was a couple of weeks ago.
I, I didn't see it then.
You're talking about this particular packet?
Uh, I dropped off an armful of copies sometime between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Nope, I definitely didn't see it. I don't know what you guys...
I, I don't recall seeing it, no.
No, I, I only, again, Annie and I have been working together on this, but the, and the items in your packet are the only items that I've seen in the plan as well, and the emails I've been included on, I've included the site plan, the updated site plan.
So, when you're seeing the narrative, you're talking about the December 30th, 2024 letter?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, that, right, that doesn't really, that doesn't really address the Aqua4 requirements, which is what I think Rebecca was getting at. And how, it doesn't address, like, how you comply, and how this, how this would substitute for the other stuff, so...
Gotcha, I, I just wanted to make sure you, you had that.
No, no, we have these things, and we read these things.
Okay.
And it's, you know, I'm looking today at a 70-page packet, which, you know, I, I give due attention to, but, you know, I mean, I may not be in the weeds on every, on every piece of every page, but I have a general idea of what's going on, and as do the other members of the board.
Absolutely.
So, I didn't see anything relative to that, and when I looked just now, I didn't see anything that hit that point anyway, which is, I think, what we're concerned with.
Yes, the, the Aqua4 Protection District permit trigger was the, the last thing that had popped up, was the last thing that we were trying to respond to, which is why Adam came in with the drainage details.
Brad, you find it?
I haven't looked at it yet, I'm just looking at this.
All right, and that's the second packet of the building scan. Thanks, Jason. I think the building is, and this, and this group.
That's all right. Still, this is...
You said the one that you've given us is updated from the one that we currently have, or is it 10-1?
This one here. Yeah, I, I added, I, I didn't do revision date or anything like that, but the one I gave you tonight's the latest and greatest, and the one that was up on the screen's the latest and greatest. The only thing I changed was, I did, added some more impervious areas, yeah, some more calcs. I just kind of broke it down a little bit this morning, and then I sent J PDF this morning, and that's why it's up here.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the December 30th letter, the only mention of the Aqua4 Protection overlay is the last paragraph where you say it lies within the overlay. And you'll be applying, and you'll be looking for a decision granting approval, but based on 2015.
Yeah, and like I said, that's, that's why I brought Adam to explain the drainage Aqua4 parts of.
Useful and helpful, glad. So, you know, it's well, it's well understood.
Okay. Can I just ask one more thing? So, are you guys concerned that this isn't like, so, what I have here is, you know, the base plan's existing conditions, right? What, what's actually out there, I've actually walked the site, with this plan, to make sure nothing's really changed, I went through, is, is that what you're concerned about? Like, the conditions out there have changed from this plan? It's not up to date, is that what you're getting at?
So I think the concern is that the plan has changed over the years, and we want to make sure that we have the proper plan, as well as with, with this on, the full site plan, to be able to see it and compare it to what you have here, and then have that reviewed. I don't, there's, I don't believe, not from my perspective, that we're questioning what you have here at all to be true, but we are not engineers, so we need to make sure that that, for the town, to make sure that it's, it is, it is what it says it is.
Yeah, I get it.
Math works out, it seems very logical, and very simple, but to, to cover.
And the thing that we have to be mindful of as board members is that if the zoning bylaw requires X, and you don't do X, then we have to figure out how that works or doesn't work. So when you're saying, we want to do something that's not quite in compliance with the zoning by, bylaw, you make an argument, you say why, and then that helps us to determine, okay, can they do this? Does it make sense? And do we have the power to, you know, allow it in a particular way? And you're also, you're making in, in the alternative argument as well, like, okay, well, if A is not good, then B. So lay it out, so it's clear for us, so it's easy for us to say, okay, here's the zoning bylaw, this is what they want to do, it's not that, and here's why, okay, can we allow it? And then, if not, here's the thing we want to do in the alternative, and this is why we can do it. And, you know, like, it gives us an easier, it makes our job easier to, you know, give you what you want, if you, you know, make the argument about this is why it's allowed, or why it should be permissible.
Because if we approve an oral, and you do something different, what do we have?
Or if it's not correct.
Well, we have no record of, you know, like, other than the, the video of this, you know...
Or if it's not, or if it's not correct, whether it's, whether it is, we approve it, we, we still have to cover ourselves and the, and the town.
So I think it'd be a good idea, we could work together, put together like, a nice narrative, or whatever, like, really break it down for you guys, that way you can...
Agreed.
Look at and say, you know what, these guys...
Then it's absolutely step one.
And present it to whoever you need to.
Before doing a full site plan.
Let us know what's up.
I don't, I don't think they need to do a full site plan now.
Right.
But we'll see what TEC said, and I assume if it's, if it's that cut and dry, I think that if they say, hey, no, we need to see a, a full site plan, then that's what the engineer says, so then that's what we would have to do.
And they would have reasons for that, as well, that they would say, well, this is why we want a, a site plan. You know, the stormwater technology has changed vastly in 10 years, so they need a whole, they need a totally different, you know, like, or, or they could say, no, it hasn't, you know, I mean, but we can't abide on that.
But I...
That would go back to the board as well, because the narrative identifies that it is a minor site plan approval, but based on the zoning, that's not necessarily the case, because it says that you will not, you will not produce an additional 10 parking spaces, but it's either or. So you're either creating the additional parking spaces, or creating the additional, or have a, a larger size building over the 15, the 500 square foot threshold, it's not...
I had read that as three different scenarios that would qualify for minor site plan approval. A project that was creating fewer than 10 parking spaces, or a building that was, you know, fell between a certain size, and there was a third trigger. And what I read was or, or, or. So if that was my mistake, I apologize.
So it says, a minor site plan review, applicants for permits to build, alter, or expand any non-residential building, structure, or use in any district where such construction will exceed 500 square feet, but not exceed a total gross floor area of 2,000 square feet, or will not generate the need for more than 10 parking spaces.
So any of those things would trigger?
Right.
So therefore...
Not, right.
It would trigger a site plan approval in its entirety, not a minor site plan approval. Unless, I mean, I, I'm...
No, I mean, I, I agree with the way you're reading it.
No.
Okay, so, wish of the board? So we're gonna...
Continue, continue this, to, and to see what kind of narrative they provide.
We have to make a, a motion to request TEC peer review, and they, they know that they have to summarize.
I think we just motioned that we continue until they come in with, with the proposal that, on paper.
Well, well, we want to, I think we need to continue to a date, and then the responsibility to have it to us.
Correct, and then we can make our decision with the...
Right.
The TEC and...
Well, we have to make that determination that they have to go to TEC, correct?
I would say in the next meeting.
Right.
Well, do you...
You keep, you put in the cart before the horse, you know what I mean? Let's see what they propose, and let's see what it's, how it's written, and if we're gonna accept the application, and...
Okay, if that's what you guys want.
That's fine.
I think that's...
Do we want to, do we want to push this to the next meeting that Brad can come to?
I won't be here the 21st, I'll be the 4th.
Right, yeah.
So because we want to make sure that he's able to...
I agree.
If there's some, something, that he's able to vote, so we push this to the...
Jason doesn't have a microphone, I don't think, over there, but he, I think him and I, him and I, him and I, him and I are on the, on the same page where, create, create it and submit it to TEC all at once.
I think that makes sense.
So instead of, instead of having us review...
Do we want to take a look at it before we submit it?
We're gonna look at it when TEC comes back, because we're still gonna have an open...
And then TZ will say, oh, this is wanting...
It's still gonna be an open meeting.
Okay.
TEC could also review it and say, hey, we want more information this way.
Look at it, and then we know we have to go to TEC anyway.
Yeah.
You might as well just have it go through TEC, and then come back with their response, and then, then there could be a back and forth. And then we'll put it on the agenda once we have the feedback from TEC. We'll put on, yeah, continue it from, with that, with that.
Understanding that Brad's out next meeting, we should push it to the...
To the, probably be that way anyway, because they have to create what they need.
Right. But at the, at the minimum, to send a...
I think at least a week, Rebecca, typically...
Two weeks, probably, right?
Two weeks.
About two weeks for TEC, so that we can get under contract and collect escrow, and then be able to move forward with the review.
Okay. Do you guys have a timeline on what you think you might be able to put summarization around together? Because what we do is we continue, we'd continue, so what we, we're gonna do is continue tonight.
Sure.
And then would submit your, you guys would submit your, we're gonna vote on TEC to do a review, but to request a TEC review, so take that, your summarization, send it over to TEC, and then, you know, the next public hearing, but based on their two-week timeline for them, for response. So to get a timeline, whether it's the 4th, the same, like we just did before, he's, Brad will not be here, so might be short on the 28th, but it also would be too shorter time for TEC responses, thinking you guys probably, so you guys probably need a week, that's why, do you get a week for you guys, or...
We were just discussing having things together for you in about a week.
Okay.
And then...
Okay.
So then that feels, it feels like the 4th is kind of like a good, sweet spot.
Feels like the 4th.
Have time for you guys to submit to TEC and then review.
The best part of the 4th is you'll have Adam, but not me.
Okay.
That might go, that might go smoother.
All right.
You've been fine.
Yeah, then we can review, so, does anyone want to flip the motion? You want...
I think you should put the motion up.
All right, yeah, I've been talking about it. So, board moves to request to the applicant to supplement their narrative, to address the issues discussed today, and to submit the, and for us to approve review from TEC on the issue as well.
Seconded. Discussion.
So we move to a vote.
We meet, does that suffice, Rebecca? That motion would suffice? Yes, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
The animus is moved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Make a motion to continue the meeting, the public hearing, to the February 2nd, February 4th meeting.
Seconded.
At 7 o'clock. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do we do our jobs, Rebecca?
You did.
Okay, good. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah. You're not going.
See that?
No, you're not.
One oh two King Street.
There's a lot of paperwork here. That's the sheet. This is still Ogden, Ogden, I didn't do that. It's out of his aggression.
Yeah, sorry. She's liberated from doing meeting minutes, so, so happy and footloose and fancy free to go grab papers that fell on the ground, I got time to burn.
I appreciate you, Rebecca.
It's like, it's like the daily catechism.
Yeah, we can share here. Oh, you got one? Thank you.
All right, this is King Street.
All right, next up on the agenda is one oh two King Street, an A and R application for one oh two King Street. Hey, look who it is.
We're not gonna continue this to the fourth.
Good evening.
I will continue until July eighteen.
My name is James Ogden, I live at Two Woodland Road in Georgetown, and I'm here before you tonight on behalf of O P M Adventures LLC, who seeks your endorsement on an A and R plan for one oh two King Street.
Do you own it?
No, the application does have a signature of the current owner, Mrs., Ms. Wright. I do have a, a purchase and sales agreement to close on the property.
When's it closing?
Probably the end of February.
What do you wanna do, just make two passes out of this? Three, four.
The plan proposes dividing the existing property into four lots. The existing house would remain on one lot that's a little bit over an acre, there would be a new thirty-one thousand square foot lot created adjacent to it for a new dwelling at one hundred King Street. The majority of the rear land would be held presumably for agricultural purposes at this point. It is right around five acres, and there's a portion in the rear of the site that is intended to be conveyed to the butter, to the rear. The larger five-acre parcel in the middle is labeled not a buildable lot, and it does have fifty point two eight feet of street frontage on King Street.
And this is your driveway that you're proposing? On the bottom of the.
There's a proposed drive right above the word King on King Street. The other paved drive is already existing. It's an access drive to the property to the rear.
Goes down the bottom, it's all the way back. Always debated going down there?
This one here, one here, two of these, one bigger looking here, or technically two, because this is gonna go here, and this is here, I believe. Is it two, parcel eleven B and eleven C?
So is that the parcel right here?
So over here. Parcel eleven, yeah. So you said the remaining is being divided into two, right? So you have B, L, B, C.
Is this, is this the plot line?
Obviously, we have King Street existing. Existing house, this lot line will cover across here, it's a little bit split, so this is a conforming dimensionally and frontage-wise lot.
Yep. This is the lot line for the scene right here.
Do you wanna talk about it on the screen, that way, like, so everybody can see it?
Yeah.
They're watching. So it's just making two lots and it's giving.
The existing property land at the rear of the property is depicted by this stone wall. The proposal is to create new lot lines around this drainage pond, which is primarily affected by the property to the rear. So this portion of land would be combined with the property to the rear of one oh two King Street. The remainder of this property would remain as a non-buildable lot for, but time to be determined.
So you're saying everything in the back is not gonna be built on?
For now.
For now, is that what you're saying?
The five-acre parcel in the middle?
Correct.
There's nothing proposed to be built on it now, and it is.
Are you going to build on that at a later time?
So, so you're not deeding it, for lack of a better phrase, as unbuildable, you're just holding it for a player to be named later?
It would be deeded based on this plan, which is clearly labeled not a building lot, it doesn't currently have adequate street frontage. If somebody were to offer to buy it and try to propose a street in there, they could come back in and talk to you about that, but I'm not gonna do it.
It's not a street, it's an easement.
That would be an easement, you know?
Well, as it is now.
There's no street there, so.
Yeah, that's why it's not built.
Right, yeah. Sorry, the language has gone there, but you said about not a buildable at this time.
And then the front of the, the eleven B, parcel eleven B, that, could you mention that would, you'd be talking to the, the not a buildable lot here, so this is what, that's.
Yeah, these notations are just, yeah.
Yeah, we moved, we moved the up there plan better.
Oh.
Thanks.
So this swath of land would, could potentially serve as access to this five acres for an agricultural use. It could be a blueberry farm, it could be a pen for sheep, it could be offered to the property owner to the rear for additional land for horses, it could be any number of things.
Are you gonna hold this other property and like, yo, if you pass, you gonna hold these lots, or are these lots going with these two houses?
I, sorry, I don't really understand the question.
Does the ownership of the lots go to the purchaser of?
Those two lots in the front?
Lot eleven A or lot eleven? Or does it stay under whomever purchased the entire property? Right, cause you're, you're saying you're making two non-buildable lots in the back, who's gonna own those lots?
Three non-buildable lots, one, two.
The, the very rear non-buildable lot would be conveyed to the owner of the property behind this.
Okay.
The owner of this parcel would theoretically be me, and the intent of the plan is to allow the existing dwelling to be sold separately from that parcel, and be sold separately from the other newly created lot.
And you would maintain ownership of the additional five acres, unless.
Unless one of the owners wanted to buy, one of, one of the new owners wanted to buy that as well.
No, actually, just move, actually, I have a.
Yes, I mean, I, I don't wanna sound flip, but if the plan's endorsed, and I close on the property, as O P M Adventures closes on the property, O P M Adventures would own all four parcels until a time at which they're conveyed to somebody else, referring to this plan.
Gotcha, nope, that's, we're gonna make sure that you aren't giving any of that to either one of these properties being sold.
I get it.
More than open to doing that, I just don't have any.
Right, you don't know what's gonna happen when the people buy.
I don't have any butts for those seats yet.
Gotcha.
What was the board thinking? It meets, uh, lot requirements, right? Area, length.
It does meet the zoning.
Yeah. It's an A and R lot.
For the, not, for lot A, it meets.
It meets.
Are there any, are there any potential concerns?
As long as the lot eleven B is labeled a not buildable lot, as well as eleven C with the intent to combine with the other land, it's in compliance with the.
Correct, yeah. That says it, not a buildable lot, not a buildable lot.
So the deed, so, so long as the deeds conformed to that intent, that would be fine.
That is correct.
Mm-hmm.
Does that get conveyed on the deed?
It doesn't get, it does not get conveyed on the, the deed, but it does reference the plan in which creates the lot, which will reference this plan once again, recorded at the registry of deeds, so it will follow the deed moving forward until such time, or if such time, somebody decides to develop the lot, as Mr. Ogden said, by creating a roadway in which they can get their frontage and move forward.
So they would have a new, so they would have a new, they would have a new plan and all that sort of stuff?
Exactly, and there would be hurdles, because we all can see that the paved drive goes and services the house all the way in the back, so there has been issues that brought forward before this board with the development right across the street, excuse me, right next to the development, as to who uses that right of way, and, you know, neighbor disputes and things of that nature, so again, there's a lot.
Is that the Hattis Farm? Is that the?
Yes, yes.
That's the farm in the back?
Yeah, it's back here.
Because that's Katy Lane right next to it.
Yeah. There's a farm on the other two.
Yeah, this was owned by the S D family, not the Sound.
What do you got up your sleeve? You'll be back.
I just got two arms. I mean, this is elegantly simple solution to a property that had been for sale for a little while, and.
And that's the old S D?
Yeah, who that has more wetlands on it than this piece.
The wetlands about the pieces, one there, one there.
Yeah.
Jesus, everybody's sick. Uh, what's, what's the board thinking? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, it's to you.
Yeah, I mean, it meet, it meets A and R requirements, I think we all, I, I think we're all probably thinking the same thing of, this, this is wetlands here, right?
Correct.
So that's, it's, that'll be, how many?
What are we, seventy-five feet from the wetlands?
Acres? This one, five acres of land here, in that parcel. Hmm, I mean, it meets to how it's written. So that's, and that's what we go by. Do we always wonder what's gonna happen in the future? That's part of the planning board's thoughts, right?
Yeah.
Not always, you never know, right?
I mean, I, I look at this, and I looked at the property when it first came on the market, and I said, there's no way anybody's gonna build, build a Katy Lane next to this and try to fit, Katy Lane was what, ten houses? It was an equivalent length road, more or less, the economics of it doesn't work to build a road into this property.
Well, it's different set of circumstances too, I mean, it's not wet in the middle on Katy Lane as it is here.
Yeah, Katy Lane was a arguably more desirable piece of property.
It was wide open basically as well, this is wide open, I believe, as well.
Any reason why not extend these lots to make them larger, if it's not gonna be, give them a little more.
I need to write out this motion to read it. Feel like I need to write out this motion.
No, just 'cause, I get it, I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
It beats, so, I mean, you guys thought?
You're the chairman. Do we take a vote?
Anyone else have any thoughts on it?
Anybody wanna buy the five and a half acres?
For a dollar, sure.
Jason, do you have anything?
I'm definitely not a fan of creating unbuildable lots.
But being a fan or not being a fan is true.
Something that's just consistent of, uh, wetlands.
Oh, you're gonna have to take that up on Mike Dempsey.
No, he'll be, he'll be trying to acquire that land, I'm sure.
For a dollar? No.
You guys are all, you guys are all so stunned, you have nothing, no comments?
I will rely on our chair.
I'm just stunned, there's not much you can do with that. Yeah, Jay, yeah, right?
All right, wish of the board? No wishes? Everyone's quiet tonight.
I make a motion, we accept the plan?
Accept the A and R application for one oh two King Street? With the stipulations that eleven C is deeded to the one oh four King Street as in, is indicated, and in the other lots are made on, are not buildable. Deemed not buildable.
And registered.
You make the motion? Brad, you made the motion, you amended it?
Oh, yeah, that's right, too, I can't second it.
Right, yeah, I amended it.
Motion made, amended, all cap, all captured? Good there? Second, anyone second?
Do you wanna?
Do I wanna second? Second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. So moved. Thank you, sir, good luck. Thank you. Would you guys mind signing this copy? Yeah, we, we will, let us just finish up here, and then we'll, we'll come back. Do you wanna leave it with Rebecca, are you taking it with you?
You guys probably just be a few minutes?
Yeah, we could.
I'll hang up.
I think, depending. All right, next up, nine twelve Salem Street, extension request for site plan approval, originally issued on January ninth, twenty twenty-four, to expire January ninth, January ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Isn't nine twelve where you approved the, uh? Which one's not, which nine twelve is that?
We did approve that, that's the one behind the whole market, over there, they had some, um, challenges with their orders and deliveries and materials, so in their order, they were requiring.
Here's the, the laser here. They said it basically wasn't.
Primary reason for the delay is scheduling issues with seven fabrications, prefabricated building has been ordered, but could not be completed before the winter, but therefore the site construction has been delayed to avoid costly winter-conditioned constructions. Request the matter to be addressed at the next planning board hearing on January sixth.
I would think there's a couple of feet of frost right now. I'm making a motion that we.
Is the typical timeframe that we extend?
Well, it depends when the, usually frost is out in April.
It, it didn't.
That's when they would start.
What's that?
That's when they would start, would be able.
You could extend for a year, and then if necessary, they would come back and request another assessment before the board.
Okay, make a motion that we extend this for a year.
Seconded.
Uh, motion made and seconded to extend the site plan approval for proposed nine twelve Salem Street, uh, one time of, frame of one year, which would expire on January ninth, twenty twenty-six. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Um, meeting minutes.
Make a motion that we accept.
Seconded.
Motion made and accepted, made, made and seconded to accept meeting minutes of the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Um, before we close.
Town planner updates.
We're gonna, do you have any updates or anything that you need to give?
Yes, I do, I just have a very brief presentation to provide you in regards to the M B T A, uh, Section 3A zoning, uh, presenting this material to the select board, sorry, Jason, uh, for the recap, but I do say it's really important, so I do wanna make sure that I can inform the board, um, I will be briefed, there will be a workshop that will be on January thirtieth, uh, at six thirty here at Town Hall, um, so let me just pull up the presentation, and some of you have seen this because you attended the initial workshop, so you may be somewhat familiar, but there are options that we are now proposing for those overlay districts, so that is what really the focus will be at the next workshop. Um, so we know what this zoning study is all about, we're just trying to align Groveland with the communities evolving housing needs and preferences, and also explore the best options for complying with Section 3A. What does this mean for Groveland? Uh, we are a small rural community, um, under the law, so we actually, um, at the meeting yesterday, had a discussion about the different communities and what it means. So there's a hundred and seventy-seven communities that must comply, so there's categories that they establish, so there's rapid transit communities, commuter, commuter rail communities, adjacent communities, and adjacent small-town communities. Groveland is an adjacent small town because of the proximity to Havel and the commuter rail station there, so that puts us into a category as to how much housing units that we must create. So an adjacent small town is five percent multiplied by the number of housing units that you have in a community, adjacent community is ten percent, commuter rail community is fifteen percent, and rapid transit community is twenty-five percent. So the other requirement under the law is that you must, um, provide for at least one district of reasonable size with multifamily housing permitted as of right, you cannot age restrict, it must allow. You cannot age restrict, it must allow for families and children, and it must have a minimum gross density of fifteen dwelling units per acre. So as we just stated, stated that we are an adjacent small town community because of proximity to Hable and because we have a year-round population of under seven thousand. So in terms of the units that we must produce, we, uh, have a minimum unit capacity of a hundred and thirty units. And the minimum unit density, as we discussed, is fifteen dwelling units per acre. So it's really important for us to highlight the fact that this is not a mandate to build housing, this is zoning. We deal with this on a day-to-day basis, as the board knows very well, this is not a production target, we do not have to produce these units. It does not restrict the affordable, it does not restrict housing to be affordable. And this is not the only mechanism that we have in place that we can provide for affordable housing and/or housing within our community. As you know, with the housing production plan, we work very diligently on that to get accepted with many different tools that we can utilize in order to create housing here in the community that suits the characteristics of the community as well. So in overview, we talk a lot about, you know, what housing is missing, we have our detached single-family homes, and then we have the high rises and the larger apartment scale buildings. But there is that missing middle housing that will provide, uh, units for, uh, individuals and with multiple units within. And they can range from a duplex to a townhouse, uh, to courtyard apartments. So there's many different ways that you can view housing. So locating the unit capacity, so based upon the law and what's required, there's land that you cannot build on. So there's land that's excluded, and then there's sensitive land that are not available for consideration. And then the available land is, um, the remaining land that you can utilize in order to locate your district. So it's really hard to see in the photo, and I apologize, but majority of Groveland is excluded land. It is not able to be considered for the purpose of the law. But there are a few other areas that could potentially be zoned for such and make sense, which is what you're seeing on this next slide, which again is a little harder to read. But where it's appropriate, given good and planning and the services and amenities and neighborhoods that we currently have here in Groveland. So the areas that we discussed with the consultant upon reviewing all of the information for excluded land and where it made sense to provide if we were to additional units. Was, the first option was Perry Park, which, uh, as you'll see, has some already two-family and three-family buildings within. And a lot of these areas that we've identified are actually the areas in which kind of you can see that Groveland was founded on, uh, where the, the beginning houses were, the smaller houses, the mill housing. So you're gonna find that these identified locations already accommodate for denser lots with more units. The next option was Union, oh, sorry, to go back, the option one for Perry Park is six acres as identified. Then, so then the option two is Union to Gardner Street, and there are some two-family houses in this particular area as well. Again, it is located closely to the town center, which means that there's ability to pick up a bus route, there's ability to, um, get the amenities that you would need, whether it be at the plaza, across the bridge, um, et cetera. Option three is the school in Pleasant Street, I'm sure you're picking up on the theme by now, um, so that again is close to Elm Square. That particular location again is on a fixed bus route, so there allows for additional transportation mechanisms. They are smaller lots and would give us eight acres. And then option four is Washington Street and Main Street, there are some addition, uh, some existing two-family houses that already exist in this area. And it would give us twenty acres, and the same argument applies that with the proximity to Hable, the proximity to the fixed bus route and other transportation measures, this would, area would particular, particularly be ideal for locating something of this nature. So those are the four options that we're taking a look at. This is all gonna be reviewed in much more detail by our consultant and his associates on January thirtieth, thirty, here at Town Hall. So we encourage all of the board to attend, as well as any of the residents that are listening. It's an extremely important discussion. Again, when we talked with the select board, I think it's really important to note that when we talk about the actual production of housing and when we're gonna see the actual production of units. You're really gonna see more of that when we start to get into accessory dwelling units and the new legislation that came out for accessory dwelling units. There is some additional investment that needs to be made that, you know, developers will need to have in, in order to move forward. But the MBTA zoning, three A zoning and the locations that we've identified, there's already housing there. They're not wide open parcels of land that somebody can just come in and say, I wanna build. So it, it, it's not likely to provide the housing that it is that, that people are fearful of to some extent. It doesn't mean that it could not happen, um, there's no guarantee, just like we witnessed in other applications, there's never a guarantee. But the likelihood of something happening is very slim, and if we're talking about actual fears of the impact to our services and impact to our, our roadways and infrastructure. You're gonna see more of that through the accessory dwelling units than you will for the MBTA zoning, at least in Groveland. In other communities, it's a different situation, as we saw, there's different categories, there's different housing requirements, there's different needs. Uh, they actually do have commuter rails in their, their communities, they already are looking for ways to build housing. In Groveland, that's not necessarily the case with the areas that we've identified, and I think it's really important to have that conversation. Because as the board had had a lengthy conversation at one point, is that there are penalties to not complying with three A MBTA, where there's no penalties for accessory dwelling units. You will comply with the state law for accessory dwelling units, but with the MBTA zoning, they will take away grant monies. And so the conversation with this board specifically came up is whether or not the grant funding outweighs the impact to the community. And where the districts that we're proposing don't necessarily have an opportunity to be constructed within the next ten to fifteen years. You're missing out on monies for the Salem Street dam that we're gonna have to go back to the tax base for, because once that dam fails, we're gonna need to come up with one point five or more monies to replace and/or to take down and build a covert, covert in that area. A lot of your other infrastructure projects, whether or not it's additional mass works projects for any new development that comes in, whether or not it's one fifty center and figuring out if there's a different approach that we wanna take. Or monies that we want available to help us figure out what to do next, so that we don't have to overburden the tax base and already the monies or limited monies that we have available to provide the services that we have now. So it is something to consider, there is no right or wrong answer, it is whatever the community wants, the community ultimately will vote. This is a zoning, uh, bylaw change that will be coming forward to the planning board at this meeting, once we determine what option seems to be, uh, looked upon more favorably. The consultant will then finalize the zoning bylaw that will come in place that will add additional restrictions as to what you would need to do and how you would need to go about, um, getting the development situated. Uh, she will be providing those draft regulations, it will be reviewed by council, it will have a advertised public hearing that will go before the planning board as, uh, the entity and the authorized authority to, uh, review such and propose a recommendation for town meeting. Town meeting can either approve or deny, if they end up denying, then we will not be in compliance and the funding that we may have available to us will be rescinded, uh, as it has been in other communities. We also had the opportunity as an adjacent small town to try again, if we wanted to, to change the zoning or change the district and have a fall town meeting. Because we have until December thirty for two thousand twenty-five to comply. But again, if the state does not want to, then we do not need to move forward as well. But I just think it's all important to kinda take a look at everything comprehensively.
We're still waiting for that Milton decision too.
I was just, I was just gonna ask.
They have not issued a decision, or rendered a decision at this point in time.
Well, I think we also don't wanna screw us over pending what happens in Milton.
And I don't think they will.
Yeah.
I think they know that a lot of people opt in twenty twenty-five and they're just gonna keep pushing it and.
And there was another thing that was brought forward, and you probably are better versed in this, but the lawsuit that was filed with Milton didn't challenge the law, it challenged the interpretation, and therefore the law still stays in effect. And then so even if it was to receive favorable in terms of Milton's argument, it still wouldn't prohibit the state from, or it wouldn't prohibit the law or the state or the, I forget the terminology that's used. But there, there is some, um, issues there with the lawsuit that was filed that, again, to your point, makes a lot more sense to just continue to follow through and not hold, so that there's no penalties and/or additional issues that get brought forward to the town.
Right, and I think, I think one of the biggest things to point out is what the intent of the law was for. And I think the fact that the attorney general has brought a suit against Milton, uh, because they are non-compliance really states what the intent of that law is. And even if the judge finds in favor of Milton, it's not gonna prevent the lawmakers from going back and rewriting, amending and sending it back through.
Well, and a, and a, you know, uh, an ancillary point is that it's not a quick fix. So it's not like we can sit on the sidelines and not do anything, and then, oh, something happens, we scramble. I mean, this is, this has to be approved at town meetings, so you need, you need a lot of vetting and a lot of review in advance. It makes every, every, all the sense in the world to get in front of this.
Yep.
Regardless of what happens in Milton or other, you know, municipalities.
Yeah, you need to be, the people need to know what it, what it means to, if we say no, if we vote no, and what it means if we say yes. And then they, they can make an educate, somewhat of an, and whatever educated decision they can make, not just based on what they may hear or how terrible it could be for having a zone. You, you need to know in going the true facts and not just what's generally out there.
And for the knowledge of the board and those listening, there is a project website, you can get to it on the link that's up there on the screen, or you can go to our website and go to Grants and Projects and go to MBA three A zoning, which is a lot more clicks than just clicking on that or using the QR code. But it will have all of the maps, it will have all of the options that were presented this evening, we will be posting the flyer on social media, uh, out here on the board to try and garner as much engagement as we possibly can at the meeting on the thirtieth. But any FAQs, any just general information about the law, what's required, what we're looking at, will be on that website, so.
Do you have that website on our, the MBTA three A zoning link?
Yes, we do.
Cool. Awesome.
Well, thanks for that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Very nice presentation.
Yeah, it was the last meeting, it was good info, and doing the math like we had, there was a math session to, to show us how many units, that fifteen per, what it meant in doing the math there, and it was interesting. You would, you would think that you would need a lot more, and it, it didn't, it was a lot smaller, I was interested, I still couldn't figure out the math, and I'm a math guy, but it was, it was a little confusing, but it was there.
No, no, I mean, that, that was my takeaway from it too, is that the impact is a lot less than a lot of people think it is on the face of it.
Okay, Rebecca, did you have anything else?
No.
No. Our next meeting will be January twenty-first at seven o'clock here.
It will be, actually be at the.
Safety building.
Public safety building or in the back meeting room, the select board meeting was pushed due to the holiday.
Okay. Thanks.
Just, uh.
Hope they appreciate taking our day.
Just getting ahead of stuff, I am gonna be away the week of, uh, the eighteenth of February.
Okay.
School vacation.
Out of the country.
Yep.
Is that February vacation?
Somewhere good?
Uh, Italy.
Is that, very nice.
Is that February vacation?
Yeah, that's school vacation week, that would be the next.
We might move that, have to move that anyway, that's not usually.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So at least we have our next two meetings, uh, the twenty-first in the small cold room, and then the fourth, February fourth.
Don't say that they're gonna be asking for heating systems.
No, I think it's heated, I, the servers used to be in there, right? They're not in there anymore.
We can just meet in the back, we fit, yeah.
Can we put on the, on the agenda in a, in a soon coming meeting to discuss the, uh, the master plan?
Yes.
Uh, Brad had asked about that a, a meeting or two ago, and I think it's a really good idea.
Yep. I think that we might be able to put it on the twenty-first because we won't have public hearings to go through.
It is on the.
It's already on.
I remembered that Brad had mentioned it after Annie had posted the agenda, so I said, oh, make sure you put it on the draft for the twenty-first, so it is on the agenda. And we'll keep it as a.
As a continuing thing, yeah.
He won't be here on the twenty-first.
That's correct.
We're gonna do the continuing.
But we're gonna have it as a continuing.
Gotcha, okay.
It's even better that he won't be here.
That, that mean, I mean, that was my second thought.
I mean, it was his idea.
Awesome.
For nothing.
entertain a motion to close.
Seconded.
All those in favor to close the meeting at eight forty-seven on January seventh?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone, appreciate it, good night.